The Franklin Township Council was made as required, indicating that this work session regular meeting would take place at the municipal building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024.
You all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for invocation by James Vasanella.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United public for which it's a nation.
As we gather here today as members of the Township Council and residents of Franklin, we hope and pray that we are ever mindful the opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to all of our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen.
County Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrasson, Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Councilman Karazi.
Yeah.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Present.
Councilwoman Udean.
Here.
Councilman Wright, Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
I have them backwards.
Thank you. Next is item number five, commendations and proclamations. Kirsten is swearing in of our new police officers. Who is? There she is.
Thank you, thank you.
You're up.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. My name is Director Mayweather. I am the Public Safety Director. I am in charge of the Police Department. Tonight, I am honored to present to you four of our newest officers who have, well, four of them just came out of the Police Academy, and one is a transfer from another Police Department. But we are grateful to add additional officers to our force. We definitely need more officers, young officers. I'm proud tonight to say that four out of the five officers are from Franklin. They are Franklin residents. Two of them are actually Franklin Youth Academy graduates. They were part of our Youth Academy. They went to Franklin High School, and they are here now. They are Franklin Police Officers. So that is a message to our young people in town that, guess what? It is possible to live and serve in your township and be a proud member of this Police Department. So I thank them for that, too, trusting in us and coming and staying home. First, I would like to have, I'm going to do them in order of seniority. There's a slim window of seniority.[231.01][231.01](Laughter). Listen, cops, they believe in it, even if it's by a minute, a day, the alphabet, seniority is seniority. So going first will be Vito Ross. So if someone from his family would like to come up and hold the Bible, or his mom is[248.81][248.81](Laughter).
I state your name. Solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will
United States.
Of the
Constitution.
And the
State of New Jersey.
Of the
Faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And same.
To the same.
Into the governments established.
Into the governments
in the United States.
And the
State.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the other people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly perform.
Partially and justly
all the duties of.
All the duties of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
Of the Franklin Township Police Department.
Of the Franklin Township Police Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Get your photos, Vince. All right, next, Ashley Ramos. State your name.
I
solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will
of the United States.
Of the
Constitution.
And the
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true
and allegiance.
And allegiance.
Governments established.
Into the governments.
United States.
In the
in this state.
And
authority of the people.
Under the
That I will faithfully.
And
partially and justly perform.
And
all the duties of.
All the duties of.
Officer.
Police officer.
Franklin Township Police Department.
Of the Franklin Town
best of my ability.
And I want to say real quick, Ashley actually drove back and forth from the Police Academy, and she was in Camden County Police Academy. It was torture to me that one day I had to drive down there. So I know she was determined to have this job. Thank you. A career, it's not just a job. All right, Zari Salis.
United States.
Of the United
Constitution.
And the
State of New Jersey.
Of the
Governments established.
Into the governments.
United States.
And the
That I will faithfully.
And
partially and justly perform.
And
Franklin Township Police Department.
I want to correct myself. I actually, Zari came from Rutgers PD, so she had a few years on, and I actually swiped her from Rutgers, but it was a good swipe. She was from Franklin. I called the Rutgers chief. I said, "Look, she's from here. Can I have her, please?" He said no, but he let her go graciously. He didn't have a choice, but (Laughs) I don't think I saw a bill yet. I won't talk too soon. All right, Ishmael Saleem.
I, Ishmael Saleem.
Solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the
same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
Into the governments
in the United States.
In the
That I will faithfully.
And
partially and justly all the duties of Police Franklin Township Police Department.
I make them a little nervous. It's okay. Patrick Kanu.
I state your name.
I, Patrick Kanu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the
and the Constitution.
And State of New Jersey.
There
That I will bear true faith in
the same.
To the same.
Into the governments established.
Into the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
In this state.
Under the authority
of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly
partially and justly perform.
All the
all the duties of Police Officer.
Of the Franklin Township Police
Franklin Township Police Department.
According
according to the best of my ability.
So help
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Can we get the whole class up here? And any council members who want to join me down here?
So, and I just want to say this, these officers represent the diversity that's in our community. And I appreciate each and every one of the citizens of Franklin for trusting in myself and the command staff for making sure that we are doing that. We will be, and we are the leaders in the state of New Jersey in mirroring our community and making sure that we have officers of almost every country represented. And I will tell you this, we will have more details later about that, but when I say trust and believe that we are trying to mirror the community that's with female officers, officers from other countries, first generation, we are doing that in Franklin, and we will win the award with the Attorney General's Office for making sure that Franklin Township Police Department is a diverse town. And believe me when I say it, I do not go out looking for these officers. They come here because this community represents what they are looking for. So I owe it all to you. Secondly, in terms of today, you probably see all over the news about the burglaries. I am not going on camera, I am not making it public about the burglaries to terrorize everyone. I want everyone to be able to help themselves, and I'm telling you, it's as simple as turning on your lights. Turn on your lights around your house. If you have an expensive house, buy a camera. You have an expensive house? You don't have an expensive house. You rent an expensive house. Everything's expensive right now. Turn on lights, have cameras, call the police immediately. Nothing is too simple, nothing is too minor. That is what we are here for. These officers, you pay for these officers to do their job. Help them do their job. Call us. If you don't know where to call, call 911, and they will direct you to a non-emergency. I see my command staff cringing when I say that, but I don't want you to overthink it. We will put out there in social media everywhere where you should call if you have information to help us, but we will not let people come into our community and prey upon us just because we are a good community of people who want to do the right thing and work every day and take care of our families. We will not do that. And coming into our homes is unacceptable. It infuriates me. I am a resident of Franklin now. I've been here for a couple of years now. I love Franklin, wish I had moved here first, but that's another story, but (Laughs) I'm going to leave it to the mayor now. I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, thank you. Good words. To the five who just were sworn in and to everyone in the room with the badge, just a moment ago, we were standing behind you. Council stands behind you both literally and figuratively because you stand for us and you help keep us safe. So thank you for all you do, and thank you for what you're about to do, all five of you. Councilman Karazi, you're going to present the Muslim Heritage Month proclamation.
Yes, I, the Mayor, our Sheba, Councilwoman Udean, myself, and you, Mayor, we can go forward just to, I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, I would like to invite the representatives of four organizations, actually, two House of Worship and two nonprofit organization in town. And first one is representative from EKN, this is a nonprofit organization that helps our community member quite a bit, and I'd like to ask them to come forward. We also have representatives from Qedma, who is a new organization, nonprofit organization, and they are going to be also helping our township, so I'd like them to come forward. We have Dr. Iqbal, Chairman of Masjid Ali. Would you please come also? And then we also have Monsieur Rahman, who is the representative from Masjid Dawatul Islamiya Mosque, the West African Mosque, so please come forward, and we're going to be coming and joining you.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Good evening. So this is recognition of the inauguration of the Muslim Heritage Month in the state of New Jersey, whereas Franklin Township is proud to recognize the contributions of the Muslim community and declare the month of January as Muslim Heritage Month annually, and whereas Franklin Township is home to a vibrant community, Muslim community, and whereas Muslims are the world's second-largest religious group practicing Islamic faith, representing approximately 25% of the world's population, and whereas there are about 3.5 million Muslims in the United States from diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds, and there are nearly 300,000 Muslim Americans in New Jersey, representing one of the largest Muslim American communities in the United States. And whereas Muslims have made significant contributions to our nation throughout history, including notable achievements, philosophy, mathematics, chemistry, physics, astronomy, medicine, music, architecture, literature, and the arts, and many more. And whereas during the month of January 2024, the Muslim community in the township across the state of New Jersey will collectively celebrate Muslim heritage, and whereas during the month of January 20, sorry, and whereas the Township of Franklin supports the rights of all its residents and calls upon our community to eliminate prejudice and bigotry as we celebrate the great diversity of all our citizens and extend the promise of our country to all. Now therefore, we, Sheba Udean, Councilman Alex Karazi, Councilman, and Philip Kramer, Mayor, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing January 2024 as Muslim Heritage Month. And I'm going to give one to all the organizations. So EKN Brother Jawad is here. NOR team, okay, Qedma team is Mahir and Sala Rana, and here's Brother Rahim, and I have one more.
I've been to several Muslim Heritage events this past week or so, and it's just, I've seen things I've never seen before, exciting things. The NOR event that we had at the Community Center was wonderful, and it's just, it's part of being in Franklin. You just learn from each other, and you celebrate, you don't just celebrate your thing, you celebrate everyone's thing. And it's just, it's a wonderful place to live and to learn.
My name is Jawad Ahmed. I'm a resident of Franklin Township, and I recently moved here about a year and a half ago, and I'm really delighted for this proclamation. First of all, I thank the Governor of New Jersey, Governor Murphy. I also thank the Franklin Township Council and the Mayor for recognizing January as the Muslim Heritage Month. There are a lot of Muslims living in Franklin Township, and that's one of the reasons I moved here, to be amongst this diverse community, and we appreciate the support and the help from all different background ethnicities for recognizing this month. Thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Qedma and the NOR night committee and the team to, for the Council to recognize us and to honor, we're humbled, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I'm Brian Ramon, Chairman of Dawat Islamiya. Yeah. We are truly humbled and honored for you to recognize the Muslim Heritage Month. I come here often. I do not belong to Franklin, but I've adopted Franklin Township as my second home. And the reason for that is Dawat Islamiya is established since 1992 here in Franklin, even though I had moved from Franklin 30 years ago, I still come here regularly. I want to thank the Mayor, Mayor Kramer, who has been a source of help to us, and also have to thank my friend, Dr. Alex Karazi, who has been the inspiration to all of this. I thank you all. Thank you Township members. I thank the new police officers who are going to keep this city safe. Thank you. Good evening. Salaam alaikum. Peace be upon you. I'm from Masjid Ali, which is our mosque on Cedar Grove Lane. This way, I'm part of this community. I'm honored, I'm humble. Thank you very much, Council. Thank you very much, Mayor Kramer, Dr. Karazi, and the members of the Council for recognition of this month, and this is unique. Once again, we are proud to be part of it. God bless you.
For final commendation, Captain Sean Hebron, MLK Community Foundation President.
Another important one. We have another, we have another important one. Just turn around. Wait a minute, everybody. Don't go away. We have a commendation for one of our own gentlemen.
Yes, yes, yes. Don't go away, please. Turn around. If you're going to leave, please exit. I've officially lost control. Excuse me, please don't stand in the, in the aisles. And could someone close the doors? Thank you. Trying to direct traffic.
Hello, everyone. With a show of hand, how many of you have been to Dr. Martin Luther King Breakfast? Wow, great. This is a foundation which was formed about 26 years ago, and every year, we have a wonderful community breakfast to commemorate the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. And in addition, the foundation have raised quite a bit money to give scholarship to graduate and Franklin High School students. In fact, 230 students have received the scholarship so far with a total of over 200, close to $270,000. And this year, we had a great event on the 15th of January, and there is a Board of Trustees, and the president of the foundation is our dear friend here, Captain Hebron. So we have a commendation by the Mayor and the Council of the Township of Franklin. We, Philip Kramer, Mayor, Kimberly Francois, Councilwoman, and Alex Karazi, Councilman of the Township of Franklin, in the county of Somerset and state of New Jersey, on behalf of the Township Council and all residents of the Township of Franklin, do hereby extend on behalf of the Franklin Township Dr. Martin Luther King Community Foundation to Captain Shane Hebron, President, appreciation and commendation for organizing and active participation in the 26th Annual Breakfast held on January 15th, 2024, to commemorate Dr. King's legacy and raise the scholarship funds to help graduate and Franklin High School students.
I just want to say, first of all, I don't know if, well, thank you for this, for this honor. I don't know if anyone ever planned an event of a large magnitude, but it takes a lot of work, and it's a lot of effort that goes involved. It's not something that I do alone. It's a team that's working with me to, to create that year after year. It's not a team that gets paid. It's not a position that offers a whole lot of prestige. That's why this is so meaningful to me, but what it is for is for our kids here in Franklin. The, the energy that's put behind it is really to get to that point in May when we could take the money that we raised and give it back to our public school graduating seniors to help pay for their college. I'm putting someone through college now, a young person through college now, and it's not cheap. And, you know, it's a state, New Jersey State School, and it's, you know, it, it requires a lot of money, so the effort that goes in is to help those students and help the parents that are, that are helping those students from right here in Franklin to be able to afford that education. So I'm honored and humbled to do this every year, and So I'm, I'm honored and humbled to do this every year, and it'll always be a part of my heart. We are, we're encouraging young people to join, to join us in our efforts because things are getting younger. Social media is a thing. We want to be able to have more young people to be able to take the torch and pass it on to because I can't do this forever. Our team is getting older, and we need some young energy behind that. So, you know, so that twenty-six years from now, this is still a thing. So thank you, and young folks, let's do this. We're waiting on you. Franklin needs you. All right. Just got another check. So that's it. It keeps coming in, and we love it. We thank you from the, from the Muslim Foundation. So look, we, we're still taking it. Our website's available. If you want to donate, you could always log on to ftmlk.org, and we will gladly accept that and pass it directly on to our students. Again, I said, no one gets paid from this. That money comes in and goes right back out to our students. All right, thank you.
We'll be having public discussion. We have a motion to open to the public.
All moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are now open for public discussion. Anyone wishing to speak may do so. We have five minutes. No yielding of time, may only come up once. Please state your name and address when you come to the mic.
Okay, you hear me? All right, Jim Johnston at thirty-four Norwich Place. I want to talk about my favorite subject, preserving open space. All right, the, the planning board at their upcoming February twenty-first meeting, they're going to be having a hearing on a proposed warehouse at seven eighty-five Old New Brunswick Road, which is right across the street from the Shoprite on Elizabeth Avenue. It's also across the street from Somerset Run, and it's, and it's next to a nursing home. This is going to be a, a big warehouse, right in the middle of a very busy shopping center. It's a hundred and two thousand square feet, sixty-one parking spaces, and twelve truck bays, okay? And, and, you know, every time I go over to that shopping center, most of the time I go over there, it's very busy, the parking lot is full, it's hard to find a parking space. And now on top of that, they're going to add this big warehouse with twelve truck bays going out into that little road that you need to go on to get into the parking lot of the Shoprite. So I don't know how that's going to work. And, and then again, it's going to be right next, that's going to be across from Somerset Run, where more than a thousand people live in Somerset Run. And also, it's going to be right next door to a, an, an assisted living facility, a, a rehabilitation and nursing facility, right there on Old New Brunswick Road, right next to the, where that warehouse will be. So all the patients who live in that nursing home are going to be looking out their window, and they're going to see trucks, lots of trucks, right outside their window. All, all the noise and diesel fumes, so, you know, I, I just don't understand it. But, okay, but that's, now, now, you know, I'm, I'm not against warehouses, but I'm wondering if this warehouse could be relocated somewhere else, maybe Atrium Drive or Davidson Avenue? Because I, I know that three years ago, you passed that ordinance that rezoned Atrium Drive and, and Davidson Avenue to be business and industry, to allow for warehouses. And Atrium Drive and, and, and Davidson Avenue are located, they, they would be the ideal place to put a warehouse because they're, they're far away from any residential areas, they're far away from retail businesses and schools. But now, but there's one thing I'm not too clear on. I, I think last year, correct me if I'm wrong, last year, didn't you pass another ordinance that banned warehouses from Atrium and Davidson? Because I'm not too clear. But anyway, that, that would be my suggestion, to relocate it over there, Atrium or Davidson. Or if it can't be relocated, just cancel it, because that, that, that is the, the worst place to put a warehouse, right in the middle of that big shopping center. You know, if, if, they, they could not have found a worse place to put a warehouse, even if they tried, okay? Okay, so, that's unbelievable. But, okay, well, thank, thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Debbie Stewart to Farrington Plaza. Echo what that gentleman just said about the warehouse. Also, a while back, we were told there would be cameras placed in certain strategic areas. I can't recall where they were, but I know something on Schoolhouse Road, where there was a big accident a couple of weeks ago. I don't think it involved a tractor trailer. But I get a lot of my neighbors and friends shooting me text messages, and with pictures of tractor trailers going down Schoolhouse, turning right onto Weston Canal, coming down Metlers. And they say to me, can you show them this? Can you tell them? What are we supposed to do? Here's the picture. And I say, first of all, don't get in an accident to take a picture of a tractor trailer. That's number one. But what should they do with that? And, and how are these cameras going to work? And I don't feel the right thing is call these wonderful police officers we just met. Maybe that's what you're saying, but I have called there, and the first thing they'll say, isn't it an emergency? No. Okay, now, you're driving down the road, and you see a tractor trailer. First of all, you got to pull over, you got to take your time, then you got to be put on hold a couple of times. I'm not faulting the police officers, because seeing a tractor trailer is not an emergency. I will agree with that. But there has to be a reasonable way to record these, and I'm also wondering how, once the cameras are installed, what will the procedure be? And will it make sense, or is it just going to be, oh, the cameras are there, call them up? Okay, anyway, maybe you can fill me in on that. So that's number one. Number two, going to the open space. I see there's Nordens coming up, but a, a first reading. Some of my friends and neighbors also attempted to go to one of the opens, two of the open space meetings recently. One, they arrived and the doors were locked. I guess it was canceled. Yeah. So I think we found out, if there's not an agenda on the website, that means there's no meeting. Well, anyway, they got there, and it was locked, and there was no meeting, I don't think. But anyway, it would be nice if it said canceled, because they were very disappointed. Then I think the second one might have had to do with weather. But what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, we started to have this conversation last time I was here. There's a church, and I assume it's a historical property, that's what I'm thinking. But can the township, since it is our money, is there a place we can go to see what your rationale was, what your thought process was, why this should be purchased with our money, and how it will benefit the township? And an easy way to look this up, maybe on their site, and maybe it's there, and I just can't find it. This property is being purchased because we think it is this, that, or the other thing. It will be utilized by the residents, or will not be utilized by the residents. I want to know this stuff. Anyway, thank you.
Just want to point out one thing. February third, there's going to be a Black History Month presentation or celebration that's going to be at the Senior Center by the Somerset Black Caucus. It's from one to four P.M. Just for the informational purposes, I'm not sure if you're going to have another township meeting before then, but I don't think so. But just putting it out there publicly, so drinks and refreshments will be here for, you know, saying all to be attendance, so it's a free event. So I just want to make sure that we're commemorating that because we had adopted Muslim Heritage Month, but we have Black History Month also rolling up next month also. So just tell a friend to tell a friend for that to be, to be actually put out there for public wise. Second portion, I just got a question, and just in the future, because it's going to come up, not this year, but next year and the years to come. Just for any infrastructure projects that's coming up that we do, can we actually have a posting in the Township Municipal, Municipal building about anything there? And I'm just going to use example. We had roadways, we had curb work that was done over the last couple of, a couple of days or month altogether. And the reason why I'm saying this is because we have students that have to travel back and forth with buses, and because we're a densely populated area in certain areas, it causes a problem when they leave, when they leave equipment on the roads. The buses have, have hard times around, have hard times getting around sometimes. And because we have slippery roadways, if we're putting in new curb work and their kids can't walk, it causes a problem. And I'd just rather prepare, over-prepare, over-communicate than rather uncommunicate about certain things that are getting done in certain wards. And even if the ward people can actually let their wards know and send a, a alert out, that would be, that would be something that could be done. I experienced it directly because I live in a area where, where I live directly on an intersection where two roadways meet, where the kids can't, have to walk in the street, and if it gets icy, we can't do nothing with the kids. So it becomes a potential hazard. And then we have four, four buses that come, that stop at that corner at all. So just want to make sure we putting that out there, just for communication wise. The second, my other things are just business questions that I want to, want to put out there, that, just looking, looking for enhancements. One is, we have, in this town, we have liquor licenses that will be sold. I see an ordinance resolution that's getting out here. But also, for, since we're having new businesses and a lot of new people coming in here, based on quoted population right now, that's stating this liquor license consumption, and there was new Murphy, new Governor Murphy just passed a new update for a lot of liquor licenses that have gone on. I think we have three that might be, have to be sold in this specific town. If we can post those and post those things, because we have new business people that are coming in the area, that are moving in this area, they might be able to be interested to actually take advantage of those type of things. But they won't know if it's not posted anywhere. So a lot of times, when we have business opportunities that might be sitting around, whether that is liquor licenses or old things that are there, it would be nice to have a posting board in the Town Council somewhere that knows about old things that might need to be renovated and updated for, you know, economic resources at all. So that's just a suggestion. The last, one of the last portions that I want to point out is that I want to point out for, just because potentially for a national election coming about, I think cannabis will be on the election ballot sooner or later at all, and we had, we're one of the cities that we're promoting the usage of cannabis. Cannabis shops have popped up in our towns. I think it's about to be twelve that, well, seven to twelve that it might be licensed now in our areas, but there are more that, that apply for applications. To get ahead of this, because it goes into school, and I don't want to go back to the eighties with certain things, but to get ahead of this, where educational wise, I think we should start communicating with the school boards and starting to get ahead of proactive approaches on how we're going to handle this going into next year, as far as the school boards are concerned, because most of this time, kids will be experimental during the summer times and spring times, and if they get in trouble for certain things that they bring in school, because school property is a little different than actually recreational use, we need to, we need to start communicating how we're handling this portion with, with the kids going forward, especially in the spring and summertime. So I'm just trying to get proactive, being that we just hired in new officers. This is another thing that we need to start communicating how we're going to be handling this, but also how we're going to be taxing that and using that for public education to actually put out there for, you know, say, for, for the betterment of the community. So that's my time for now, and that's, that's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Mike Hampton, three nineteen Schilling Drive, Somerset. Happy New Year to everyone. My New Year's resolution, I've been unplugged for the entire month, so I missed a lot of what was going on in the town, but I decided to come out tonight to the meeting. One of the things I did find out, though, was the new stigma coalition. Yeah, stigma free. I was curious to know what the Council's plan was as far as diversity for that particular commission. Speaking as a black Christian, I could say the way that, we have certain stigmas in every community that are a little bit different. So I just wanted to know if the Council has a way to ensure that enough communities, because we are one of the more diverse towns in Somerset County, that there's enough diversity on that particular commission more than any other, because I can't tell you about stigmas in a community I'm not from, or a community of people I don't necessarily interact with on a daily basis, and vice versa. The other thing I'm curious about is, based on the previous speaker, one of the biggest stigmas is weed versus alcohol. Our town has more liquor stores and dispensaries than we have full-service sit-down restaurants. But we're creating a stigma coalition on substance abuse and mental health, but our over-promotion of two of the most argued substances is a little bit questionable to me. So what are we going to do to ensure that? Because it's one thing to say, oh, we're going to get together once a month, and we'll come up with some events in, you know, the municipal area, and people can come out, and we'll have posters, and we'll raise money, and we'll donate it to a nice cause, but what is that really doing? Like, just in the sense of, are we taking proactive measures to ensure that maybe we have too much liquor being sold in the town? My other question is, what caused the creation of this particular coalition council, whatever you want to call it? Was there a rise in mental health calls within the town over a certain period of time? Was there a rise in substance abuse? Was there a rise in substance arrests? Was there a rise in overdoses? Like, what, what caused this? Because when I brought up about a month ago about creating some sort of commission on the food insecurity crisis, everyone told me about these other organizations that exist but aren't directly from the Council. In the state of New Jersey, I can tell you, we spend more money on mental health and drug abuse than almost any other state in the country besides California and Florida, especially with rehabs, being privatized rehabs versus non-private rehabs. So I'm just confused on why, what specifically led to the creation of that particular council or commission? I got two minutes left. So let's switch to open space. The church that we're buying, I have some similar questions. I read the little page that comes out, and it says, you know, betterment of the town or public interest, like whatever. What specifically? I'm just curious. I'm not opposed to spending the money over there to preserve that part of the town, but what is that church offering to the town? Do they host NA meetings, AA meetings, outreach programs? Online, it says that they have ten members that actively go there. So the church itself can't be, and I don't want to, you know, say anything, but like the, ten people. We have a town of seventy thousand.
It just, just, it's the land, not the church.
With all due respect, with all due respect.
The land.
Please don't, with all due respect, please do not interrupt my time.
Not interrupting, I'm just.
You are interrupting, and I would ask the Mayor to advise him, or the Township Attorney, who handles these exact things, to inform him, you cannot speak over me during my five minutes. He is a guest of the Council at that. He doesn't even have the power unless you all give it to him. He has a designated amount of time. He stole about.
Give an extra minute.
Like, come on. So in terms of the open space, even if it's the land, I'm assuming it's the development rights, which would then mean, can we, can the town decide to knock the church down and sell those development rights to someone else? Is that an option? Is that something that gets discussed at these meetings? My other question is, with some of these meetings, they do get canceled quite often, certain meetings, for various reasons. I want to know if the Council is willing to put in some sort of ordinance that would say, you have to, however many meetings you decide, when you guys set your calendar for the year, you have to make eighty percent. If you can't make eighty percent, you need to step down. We can't not have things being, having meetings because folks who volunteer don't show up. Or when you go to these planning board meetings and certain folks are there less frequently than other folks. Are we keeping talent? Are we keeping tally of how many people that sit on these commissions that are quote-unquote volunteers are showing up and not showing up? And is there a standard that's set where if a person doesn't show up this many times, then we're going to do something? Also, my last minute, I want to take into account, and this is going to be a sensitive subject for some of you on the council, Thomas Chase. There's been numerous planning board meetings I've been at, that he sits on the planning board. One of them in particular was the Puleo Group that came in. They were the Christmas Tree Company. They're going to be over on Atrium and Davidson. He was sleeping during the presentation. Now, there were two female members of the planning board right next to him. One had to nudge him at one point to wake him up. Our town's being sued because of warehouses, and if I feel like if somebody were to go back and look at the cameras, this isn't the first time, because I've seen it on a couple of occasions as well, and I want to know if the council's willing to look into this. You could check the footage for yourself, and if you find that he is sleeping, how is that going to be addressed? We can't have members sitting on the most important board in the town, sleeping when folks are presenting, and if they're a quote-unquote quasi-judicial body, as the mayor has said on numerous occasions on public record, I don't know a court in this country where a judge or any lawyer, and you have one sitting next to you, would allow a juror to sleep and then cast a vote on something. And you're being sued in court, and if they were to see that, I'm pretty sure they'd overturn a lot of these rulings about banning the warehouses.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor, seeing no one else coming forward, I'll motion close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
For those who spoke on the warehouse, uh, thank you.
Mayor, you got to take a vote.
You seconded.
Thank you. Moved in, seconded.
Seconded.
Yeah.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed. Thank you for correcting me. And those who spoke on the warehouse, thank you for the information. Thank you for keeping us informed. I have been following, uh, that warehouse. Those comments are best delivered at the planning board meeting. The cameras, um, around Schoolhouse, the plan is to put up the cameras so that we can monitor the activity, so we can look for patterns, we can look for, gee, the trucks coming from Warehouse X, they are, they tend to go down Mettler's Lane, so we talk to Warehouse X about that. We can, um, maybe there's times of the day that things are happening. We can't get tickets from the cameras, um, but we're, we can learn habits from the cameras and, uh, take action from that. Uh, let Mr. Bornlocker.
And then there is additional uses for those cameras as well, and additional uses of the cameras are, and, 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 yes, I will sound like that broken record. Call the police, call the police, call the police, you're not bothering them. The Public Safety Director just said that that's their job, that's what you pay them to do, and that's to enforce the law. So, that's what you should tell your friends, call the police. If it's a non-emergency, the reason why the dispatcher might ask that question is because there might be more than one or two calls coming in at the same time, and they have to prioritize calls. So, that will oftentimes be the first question that they ask, is this an emergency? And then they'll say, please hold. But that doesn't mean that you don't convey the information about whatever the violation is that's being observed. And these cameras can be used in conjunction with those phone calls to determine where exactly those trucks are going or coming from. All right? Because now, the camera's on Schoolhouse Road and Randolph Road, and you call and say that a truck just went down Schoolhouse Road from Randolph Road, or in the opposite direction, whatever it might be, and then it aids the police, the police officers in attempting to locate that truck. It might now be backed up to a loading dock, right? So, then they can go find it based on the description and seeing what, what's happening on the cameras. That's the purpose of the cameras as far as, uh, how they'll be used. There's eight different locations that the cameras will be put up at, at various intersections to cover most of the roads in the, in the industrial area of the town.
Do you have a timetable?
Well, the timetable is all in the hands of Public Service Electric and Gas, who has to be able to provide us with the electricity. The cameras are in the IT department right now, waiting to be installed.
Um, the property around, uh, east, around the church, uh, in East Millstone, we're not buying the church. We're buying the prop, some property around it. They're, they're sectioning off, what, two and a half acres roughly?
Yeah, there's, there's a portion of land that the church currently owns that will be sold to the township, not having anything to do with the church building itself.
We're buying it outright, we're not buying development rights, and we're preserving land is the, is the main answer to why we buy open space. It happens to complete a ring that goes around East Millstone, so it's useful in that way. Uh, but we buy open, in general, we buy open space so that people don't build things. I mean, it's, it's kind of humorous to me that, um, excuse me, that we get criticized for not buying open space, and we're buying open space, and people are criticizing us for buying open space. Um, we, I suppose we could post why each one is doing it, but in general, we are buying open space to preserve it, to preserve habitat, to preserve trees, all the things that people have come here and complained about when a warehouse is going up. As far as, um, liquor licenses, maybe after, when it's your turn, Mr. Bornlocker, you can add more to this, but I don't know that someone looks in a paper or looks on a website and says, oh, there's a liquor license there, hmm, maybe I'll build a restaurant. Someone wants to build a restaurant, they call the town up and they say, do you have any liquor licenses available? I don't know that advertising, when I first heard about that, I thought that was a good idea. I don't know that advertising will help, uh, and the world's going to change with liquor licenses when, uh, govern, well, when the new change in alcohol, um, licenses comes about. Um, there is a, uh, attendance standard for committees. It's 50%. Uh, at 50%, we can remove them. Uh, our township clerk, and probably one of her most hated, uh, um, jobs that she has to do, at the end of the year, when we're going to appoint new committee members, she compiles a list of, of many things, including what their attendance has been. So, we've taken that, we take that into account when we appoint. The reason why I missed the vote to close the public session is because of the words about Mr. Chase. It's Ted Chase, not Thomas Chase. Mr. Chase has done more for this town than most people ever will. I've often seen Mr. Chase look like he's sleeping, and then lift his head up and ask a pointed question that changes the course of what that meeting's doing. So, said enough. Mr. Born, uh, I'm sorry, any other council members have any comments to make?
Uh, yeah, about one or two things that were mentioned there.
Go ahead.
Um, I believe it was Mr. Guy, if I'm wrong, sorry, that mentioned about, uh, vehicles, construction-type vehicles, I think you're referring to, that are parked on roads and we're doing. And if I'm misunderstanding, I'm sorry, but I do want to respond that, uh, in as much as, I've seen instances, we do a lot of infrastructure work, not just roads and sidewalks, but a lot of different infrastructure work around town, below and above. And sometimes it's very difficult to find the appropriate places to park a lot of these, sometimes very huge vehicles. Occasionally, I agree, I've seen them in spaces that, at night, even if you have a cone or something, it could be a dangerous situation, and, and I agree. But I must say that most of the time, we do find really appropriate places to keep them. Um, because of the volume of that kind of work that's going on, especially with the sidewalk stuff I think you're referring to, which is really important for everybody, but especially school kids and disabled, that as we're doing that work, and we have a lot of projects scheduled all over town coming up this spring and summer, that, um, at a Public Works meeting, committee meeting, which I'm on, I'm going to ask that it's on the agenda, because like I say, I think we do a great job, I think we have to do a little bit better because of the sheer volume, which is a positive thing. But the last thing we want is somebody walking their dog or some, riding a bike or a car, especially at night, and to ram into the back of something, um, that doesn't have to be where it is. So, I hear you, I, I, I think we can sharpen that a little bit and, uh, hopefully avoid any issue. And just expound real quick on what the mayor was saying, because he helped, he's all modesty, he helped to, uh, kind of rewrite that whole situation with attendance, because it, 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 it used to be terrible, I'm talking decades ago. And, uh, we had a debate, and some people, like myself, thought it should be a 75% threshold, some people thought other things. We landed on a 50% threshold. Now, there could be extenuating circumstance, someone has a family crisis or an illness, and the, they give what's called an excused absence. But otherwise, um, I, I, I mean, I agree, we, we do focus on that, the clerk does it. It's all public record, is my understanding. Um, so, if you are interested in seeing the attendance records of any committee, commissioner, or board, I'm sure upon the proper request, the clerk would provide that, and we are conscious of that, because you, i- i- if there's not a really truly valid reason, we don't want somebody taking up space and name only. But on the other hand, we've had so many wonderful, wonderful volunteers over the years, understandably, sometimes their attendance cannot be, um, all the time. So, for now, we're going to leave it at that and just, uh, take a, a serious look at it. Each year, we do our reappointments. I don't know if that helps, but if you're curious, the data is public, publicly available. Thank you.
Anyone else from council?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a comment on this mental health stigma. Uh, unfortunately.
What is this?
Oh, you're going to be, okay, that's fine. I was going to say that, but, uh, yeah, that's clear, I was talking about that. Very good.
I want to say something, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So, one example was last night, we had a redevelopment agency meeting that got canceled. The reason why the meeting got canceled, I was sick, so I couldn't make it. And, uh, there were a few people on the board that didn't respond if they were able to attend. So, we didn't have a quorum, and because we didn't have a quorum, we canceled the meeting. Now, that, that, we only have 12 meetings a year. That's the first time that, since I've been on redevelopment and for a long time that we cancel meetings. But people do get sick, you know, things come up, and, uh, we do have a couple openings, and so if we can fill the seats, the likelihood of us having a, a full quorum if one person gets sick, or if somebody doesn't respond, we don't have to cancel meetings. So, that's one of the reasons why meetings get canceled, because sometimes the, the commissions, the boards, the committees, they don't have a quorum.
Anyone else from council?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could just mention one thing. Uh, Dr. Ted Chase, um, I have similar experiences to the mayor in interacting with Professor Emeritus Chase, uh, who, um, taught at the biochemistry and microbiology at the School of Environmental and Biological Sciences at Rutgers University. I think he still does some classes now, um, in addition to serving on a number of boards and commissions within the municipality. Um, uh, I would say looks would be deceiving, is probably the best description, um, where he seems, uh, like he's resting, and might be taken to be sleeping, and then boom, pay attention to every single word. He's quite an astute scholar, um, a dedicated public servant, and it's not something any of us have, have missed. Uh, but his work is always impeccable. Um, he reads every single detail and provides, um, copious corrections to a lot of material, and has shaped and continues to, in all of his activities, um, positive change on a number of different subjects, particularly with his background in science, um, and I know his, uh, commitment in the environment. So, um, you know, thanks for noticing, we, we join you in noticing, um, and, and, and that's the, the truth behind it. Thanks.
Anyone else from council? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just answering further some questions. In reference to your questions about the open space meeting, so certainly open space meetings, which I attend all of them, as does the mayor and, uh, the deputy mayor, uh, they're the two council liaisons, but I've, I've attended all of the, uh, open space meetings, um, since I became manager. Um, the, the most recent one was canceled, and it, and we posted on the website. So, when a meeting is canceled, it is posted on the website, it'll be in the news. I, in fact, for this most recent one, the reason it was canceled was there was an impending ice condition, and in the interest of public safety, we, we just chose to cancel that meeting, as there were no pressing matters that couldn't be carried to the February meeting. Um, so while I apologize that someone may have come out to attend a meeting, what I would always say is, check the county, the township website before you leave. It's always posted on the township website, and Tarek Kenyon, who's our land management consultant and who manages those open space meetings, is, is very diligent in making sure that the IT department gets it on the website, should it be canceled. So, that, that, that says that, as, and, and, you know, I'm not going to echo the words of the mayor already about the, the, um, the motivation to preserve one piece of land versus another. I think I had a pretty in-depth conversation with you at the last council meeting in reference to that topic, and what drives, and, and what is the motivator to acquiring property. And the number one, the number one, even more so, the mayor says, preserve land, trees, all those other things, but the number one compelling reason that, that drives the township to pursue a piece of property is an interested seller, all right? Because without an interested seller, without someone who actually wants to part with their property, it makes it very difficult to buy that property. Um, you know, you know, Mr. Johnston talks about the property at Old New Brunswick Road, and New Brunswick Road, that is on the, on the planning board, uh, agenda. I'm not going to discuss the, the application itself, but he, you know, infers that that should be pursued for open space. That property owner had, there's a building on that property, and that building owner has no interest in selling that property to the township of Franklin. We pay a rate of pay that he would have no interest in, because he has, you know, these visions of, of a great deal of profit by constructing a warehouse there. Um, and it's in a zone, and that property, the, the time of application rule for that, it, the application was deemed complete before any ordinances were amended, so that that application is a valid application to the planning board, to answer your question, Mr. Johnston. So, that, that's, that kind of puts that in, in some context, hopefully. Um, Mr. Guy's questions about infrastructure, I think Councilman Fasenella did a very good job of answering that. What I will say is that all township construction is, uh, the ongoing work is on our township website under the, the Public Works page, and also Nixels are put out daily when that work is being done. And I, I just not questioning anything that Mr. Guy said, uh, as, as to timeframe, but generally, concrete work and asphalt work doesn't get done past the month of November, because weather conditions don't allow for concrete to be poured beyond that timeframe, and asphalt plants shut down, so you can't get asphalt to pave roads. So, that work wouldn't be done when it's generally icy conditions, although it certainly could be rainy, I certainly won't, you know, say that. Liquor licenses. Liquor licenses are sold by auction, sealed bid auction. The township doesn't just say to a person who's interested in it, sure, we'll sell you one, here's the price. It has to be by sealed bid auction. So, the posting of availability is kind of irrelevant to someone. People will approach the clerk's office and ask if we have any, um, liquor licenses available. Liquor licenses, both distribution licenses and consumption licenses, are based on census population. And the, the most recent census allowed for us to have more consumption licenses and distribution licenses. We sold our distribution licenses, no longer have any available consumption licenses. If someone approaches the town and says that they would be interested in purchasing one, then the elected officials can consider whether or not to sell another one. And that's the reason why I think we have one on the agenda, um, for sale. Um, as far as the mental health and substance use disorder stigma coalition, we'll call it, uh, I think that's council, I'm sorry, council. So, this is part of the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, which is a nationwide, uh, organization that, that municipalities take part in. Um, we're a, we're a, uh, um, a community that has gotten involved in this over the last several years. It's a program that, um, generally is under the, um, the management of Safi Callen, our special projects manager. This is not about a program targeting substance abuse, it's a program targeting the stigma attached to people who have mental health issues or substance abuse, uh, substance use disorder, which, which is a clinical diagnosis, and it's, people who suffer from those disorders, both mental and substance use disorder, oftentimes feel alienated and, and not part of the community, and, and that the community is not welcoming to them, they're them, they're pariahs, and this council is hoping to work towards, you know, a better understanding of those conditions and us becoming a more compassionate community as it relates to people who suffer from those disorders. So I don't think that this has something to do with the state spending a tremendous amount of money on mental health abuse. This is addressing a different level in that it's looking at trying to become a more compassionate community as it relates to people who suffer from those things. And I would strongly encourage those people in this room who want to have a better understanding of that, I would like additional information as it relates to that and how the community engagement can be done. But most importantly, attend the meeting on February 21st at 6:30 here in the municipal building. RSVP, there's an email address and a phone number for Safi on our website. It's the banner, one of the banner items on the township website. The email address, no one's going to write this down, but people may be watching TV if you're interested, is healthyfranklin@franklinnj.gov. Safi Callen's extension on the main municipal number is 6427. RSVP, and come and get involved, all right? That's the way to get a better understanding of what this effort is about. I think that was all of them, Mr. Mayor. Now, I don't have to report that in my manager's report later, because that was one of my report items.
You don't have to RSVP to come.
So we are asking for RSVP to determine the room because there's other meetings that night. We currently have it in a large conference room, but if there's a large number of people who are interested in coming, then we would move it to this room. That's the only reason why, just to get an idea on the number.
Just didn't want people to shy away if they didn't.
No, absolutely not. I mean, if last minute you can come, then come, absolutely. You don't have to RSVP. We're asking people to RSVP so that we can determine the room size.
We are now on to council comments and reports. We can start to my left with Councilwoman Udine.
Thank you. So first, I want to congratulate our police department for swearing in our latest newest police officers. I think a lot of what's happened, we've been getting a lot of phone calls on home break-ins, and I'm positive that our chief will be on it. And as she mentioned, her tips and tricks is to keep your lights on and invest in a good camera, which will help. I also want to talk about the Muslim Heritage Month. So there's been quite a bit of events in the last two weeks that happened. The first one is the Noon Night that was put together by the Gitna team that was here earlier today. They did a phenomenal job. If you attended, you would have seen so much cultural traditions were put together, performances, traditional food, and performers by the Dabka team. I think there was a Sufi swirling. So a lot of things went together, and they did a great job of just putting it together within two weeks. So about, I think, four to 500 people attended the event in the senior center, which was a great turnout. So thank you to them. On top of that, we also had last Sunday, the Muslim Heritage Month Coalition had an event in Doubletree, and about 2,000 residents showed there. So another phenomenal event with a lot of performers, educational knowledge sharing, and a lot of good food. So thank you to both of the organizations for putting it together. I also attended a festival in the library called Punggol Festival, which is, happens in Tamil, Tamil Nadu, which is south of India, and it's Thanksgiving to nature, farmers farm and animals, basically a kickoff for the farmers. And Punggol Festival means so many things to so many different cities within, or countries in South Asian continent. Very similar, festival happens throughout, and it's usually a kickoff of all the great agricultural farming that's going to take place. One thing that I want to point out is on the festival that we went to, there was a Franklin Warrior student who shared with us a book that he created, or he actually interpreted. It was called The Eagle, or The Egg-Eyed Chameleon. And Karthik, you're here, right? Karthik is here. So thank you, Karthik, for putting that book together at your spare time and just giving it to the library so that our residents can read off of it. And just, you know, he's my son's classmates, so very proud to see him be so very successful. And I know you're going to do great, Karthik, so thank you. You know, one thing the mayor mentioned on the festival was that there are 72 languages spoken in Franklin Township, 72. And I thought that was a great, just showcases our diversity in town of how many people and religions and ethnic backgrounds and just, you know, we're increasing in numbers of diversity, and it's just so much to be thankful and blessed to be in a town such as Franklin. Let's see. Okay, so the other thing I attended was MLK Breakfast. Congratulations to Captain Sean and the staff and the kids for putting together an awesome program. I love seeing kids take part in programs and just having them there with the dancing and, you know, just showcasing their talent was very nice. So thank you to that team. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just to switch things up, Councilman Karazi.
Thank you very much. And it was a pretty busy three weeks for me, Mr. Mayor. But first, I want to thank the Public Works Department for doing an excellent job in clearing and salting the roads. In fact, I got my first call from a resident complaining that their road is not clean, and by the time I returned her call, she said everything is fine. So that was great. So I want to thank the township manager as well for coordinating that. I also spent quite a bit of time with the township manager and safety director, as well as director of Public Works Department, just to be oriented. And there were a couple of committees and board advisory meetings that I participated. The first one was the Advisory Board of Health, and during that meeting, we discussed about the health assessment down in the township. And the board will be reviewing and planning to select a couple of the recommendations from that assessment that will have the most beneficial health benefits to the residents. And also, Ms. Donna Lisi, the chairman of advisory board, had attended a meeting of the Somerset and Hunterdon Safety Community Coalition. And one of the requests that they made, which I shared with you, Mayor, and as well as township manager, is to have naloxone in the AED boxes in case there is a case of drug overdose to be used to save lives. So I think we're going to be looking at it, and maybe township manager will.
It might have already been done at this particular point. I tried to do it the next day.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
I talked to the police department, and because they have a police officer also on those committees, they had already reported it back as well.
Great, great. Thank you so much. And also, the advisory board requested the township to become a member of New Jersey Local Boards of Health Association, to allow them to get useful information, and this is being done as we speak. Their next meeting is on February 7th at 7:30, which will be in person in the conference room across the hall. The other committee that I attended was the Trail Advisory Committee, and this was a Zoom meeting, and they reviewed the final Franklin pathway and trail plan. And it is an extremely comprehensive plan, which clearly identifies the vision for Franklin Township's trail system over the next 10 years. And I also learned that we have over 70 miles of trails in our township, and which is managed, of course, by the municipalities, Somerset County, and State of New Jersey. And the new plan contains site-specific recommendations for trail development, improvements, and enhancements to make these spaces usable, safe, and welcoming for Franklin residents as well as the visitors. So we encourage residents to really take advantage of these trails. Their next meeting is on February 14th at 7:00 PM, and it will be in person. This week, I will be attending two more meetings. One is tomorrow is the Human Relations Commission meeting, which will be in the large conference room across this hall. It's going to be at 7:00 PM. And I understand that Deputy Mayor is going to be guest of honor during that meeting to talk about his goals and plans for the year. And also, by the way, HRC has two openings, and one of them hopefully will be filled tonight, which I believe we're going to be talking shortly. And Friday, I will be attending the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee meeting. That's at 10:00 AM, and again, it's open to public, and that one is going to be at the senior centers. We didn't have Hamilton Street Advisory Board meeting this month. And I had the privilege of attending four great events, and Councilwoman Sheepa mentioned all of them. And I just want to congratulate our Franklin High School student. This is a book that he translated from Tamil. It has five children's stories. It's really great, and I encourage people to buy this, or definitely we will have one in our school library. Thank you very much for that. And other events, I also participated in those events. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I attended a day-long training by League of Conservation Voters. And actually, we have several other elected officials, newly elected officials from other townships. And in fact, one of them from Berkeley Heights asked to get a copy of our tree removal and replacement ordinance, because they are trying to implement the same thing. And we provided a link for them to take a look at it. And thank you, Deputy Mayor, for arranging that. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Vasanella.
Trying to keep us on our toes, Mayor. Anyway, I was referring to the order of which he calls us. A couple of things, I don't want to be repetitive here. Did go to the MLK event, great event, been to the majority of them in the last couple decades. Moving along, I know they were here, and we've mentioned it. I just really want to, and not to be disrespectful, I believe if I wrote it down, it was a little hard hearing, Rocco, Ashley, Mary, Ismael, and Patrick, who are now sworn officers of this township. If I got any of those names wrong, I apologize. I was trying to write while everything was going on. We don't take lightly, I don't, I know everybody, nobody up here takes lightly that these people have sworn and taken a note to put themselves in harm's way if necessary to protect every single person in this township. And when push comes to shove, that's what it comes down to. And I feel blessed and proud. And although one of them wasn't, and they're going to do a great job anyway, to find out that the other four, the majority of them, seems like most of the hirees now with police are coming from Franklin, some that have lived here their whole lives. That's a fantastic thing, because when you're here, putting your life on the line to protect people, to understand the people and the landscape and everything about it, I think just makes it a little bit more of a connection. Not that we won't take and have wonderful officers that don't live here or grew up here, but again, thank you, congratulations, and we keep you in our thoughts and prayers, and please be safe. Went to Central Jersey Housing Resource Center, which I'm on the Board of Trustees, for nothing major report, a few other meetings. I'm really just going to mention now the public safety meeting we had, because there's a couple of issues I think are worth updating. I'm on that committee, we had it earlier tonight. Councilman Karazi was also there. And before I do, sorry, before I just read out some main points from the meeting, something was mentioned about snow. We had a pretty mellow snowstorm, or whatever you want to consider it, fortunately, but it's still relatively new rule, so I just want to mention, because it's integral, it's very important, does it doing a great job with snow removal and salting and everything else. We, you have, other than a few streets, a few streets that are designated and I believe the people know that live on those streets, every street, every other street in this town, you must take your vehicle off when it is snowing. It's spelt out exactly when, but obviously, if we're heading a storm, you need to remove your vehicle, you know, do it safely, but in your driveway, your lawn, if you have it wherever, a friend's house, but that is really an important part that in the past has kind of interfered was doing a stellar job, because you can't, you know, if the cars are on the road. So I just wanted to mention that because people think are still getting familiar with it, and if we have a really big snowstorm, that's going to be very relevant. Anyway, a quick readout on the Public Safety Committee meeting. Arrived together, alternative responses to reduce instances of violence and escalation is when we send a mental health expert along with the responding officers. I know it's been talked about here previous. The director gave us an update. We've had 80 responses since October that they, the person, or I don't know if we use a couple of people, professional, has gone and went on these calls. And if I remember the meeting correctly, because we talked about this in quite a bit, every single instance, there was not, nobody ended up harmed. I think somebody, officer may have gotten bit or something, but basically, there was no injury to the people involved in the situation. And that is not like we have a big history of people getting hurt, but obviously, when you have a mental health issue, that is what, I think they said, half of the instances that involve fatalities at police responses in the state of New Jersey involve a mental health issue. So I just, I think that program is great. We're monitoring it, and it is today, in today's world, probably more important than it ever, ever was. So just to give a little update on that program. We ordered our command post vehicle, which can do a lot of things, but in case of an emergency, God forbid, can actually be like a mobile police station if needed, police size, many other uses. We got the funding mainly, it's mainly being paid through grants that our legislators in the district head by Joe Danielson, Assemblyman, was able to get the bulk of the money. I know that's been said here before, but the point is, it's ordered. It should show up this year. That's kind of like a car you're getting customized. They're building it to spec, and it just takes time, but the goal is that that will be here on arrival, and I'm sure you'll hear more about it. But it's been ordered, and that was a major step in that process. The last thing I'll mention is the, oh, we have an entry-level test. It was mentioned that we recruit, especially locally, the test to get sent to the police academy, if that's your choice of career. It's free for residents, and there's a slight fee for non-residents, but if you know anybody that's interested in a career, please, the first step is to take the entry-level test exam. And there's one this spring and summer, and whoever does that successfully would be in the academy in the first quarter of, last quarter of this year, or first quarter of 2025. It moves quick, and we changed the way we did that a few years ago, and I think it's great that, I think the results that we saw by the people sworn in tonight is partly based on our, let's just say, initiative there. Last thing, you heard her comments, so I'm not going to repeat them, except she said, please remind people, I'm talking about our director of public safety, call, call, call. If you see somebody, I'm not talking about trucks and that stuff for a minute, not that that's not important, but I don't go down the whole list, but these burglaries we are focused on, she's very proactive of forces, but a lot of this is people who, however ways they disguise them being there or don't disguise them being there. If you see anything, anybody, any vehicle, even if someone looks like they're a vendor, it's very easy for the police to confirm if somebody is legitimate or not. Not trying to have everybody be scared, but her message, she said, please repeat. Call. If you have, you know, use your discretion, if there's something happening in the moment you think is an emergency, call them. you think is an emergency, call the 911. If you don't, call the non-emergency. But if you don't know or don't have the non-emergency, her instruction was, call the 911 if it has to do with something suspicious and important in the moment. But please, they truly need the residents' help in getting over this situation. So I just want to emphasize that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Onijaka.
Thank you, Mayor. It's with infinite happiness that today, we West African community watch a full integration of the West African community in Franklin Police Force. My name is Patrick Kellon. Very happy about it. A young man, Patrick. Yes, I knew when Ambassador Odey Masur was mentoring him in Franklin here. Now, he found out to be what we're all proud of, no doubt. Ambassador Masur will be happy wherever he is today. He marks a very substantial and distinguished time and day for the West African community today. Happy about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It's Councilwoman Kelly Francois.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would like to also say congratulations to the Police Department and the new officers that were sworn in today. I'm very pleased that the diversity of the township is being increased and represented with the police officers within the department. I also want to give myself a pat on the back, because I heard that there were some of those police officers that were sworn in today that were part of the Franklin Youth Initiative Police Academy. We started that police academy years ago with Captain Sean Hubbard, who was not a captain back then. We spent many years working to get that police academy up and running. And so I'm giving myself a pat on the back to see that we actually had some police officers go through, some children go through that academy and become police officers. It made my heart very warm. And the other thing I want to say, another pat on the back, the Martin Luther King Breakfast started when I was the mayor, back in 1997. I know that Mr. Von Lacher gets all the credit, but I was back there then, too. And I was the mayor back then, the first one we had.
I'll get credit for going to everyone. You moved away to Colorado for a while, and you missed a couple. I got to go to all of them.
Yeah, you got to go to everyone. No, I did not. But it was a wonderful breakfast, it's always a good breakfast, and I want to say kudos. And I'm very thankful that Captain Sean Hubbard is the chairman of that breakfast. It's always well-attended, very inspiring, and I'm glad that it has sustained itself for all these years, 23 years. The legacy continues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are you telling me I got to come up with a breakfast?
Probably.
And now introducing our Deputy Mayor.
Well, it is hard to stay thin in Franklin, because every holiday, and we have such a diverse community, is celebrated with wonderful food. And it's insulting not to eat every last ounce and try every single course, including the very successful Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast, and as well, the Muslim community with the Noor Night and all the different celebrations. So I want to congratulate those folks, both for recognizing the Muslim faith, for Governor Murphy recognizing it in the council, particularly during, in these difficult times where folks are really feeling a lot of Islamophobia and heightened sense of insecurity from threats. It's, you know, heartwarming to be able to come together and recognize an important part of our community. And the breakfast is just outstanding, and Captain Hevern has just been an outstanding leader in my time on the school board, picking, you know, up with some of that, and transitioning as they went on their own, is another facet of their growth and their independence, which has just been quite spectacular. I don't have a lot more to say, except I want to give a shout-out to Police Director Spruill for her leadership, which is tremendously strong. It's consistent, it's compassionate, and also inclusive, and, you know, making the community aware of things they can do to help deter crime, and what to do if they see something. And we've always say, see something, say something. That's an active, proactive measure, and I commend her for doing that. And if you haven't seen the ABC clip where she was on the news earlier, and I would say, I would say, watch it, you know, it's very informative. I'm grateful to have her leadership, but all of officers. And I'll end with, you know, everyone's mentioned our new officers with all force. We're very appreciative of that, the safety that they provide, but so many other services when we're in times of need, which are very much appreciated.
Thank you. I also want to again acknowledge the police and the ones who were sworn in. Police force is looking more and more like Franklin. I was glad to actually see a police officer that I'm taller than.
I'm sure she would appreciate you making note of that, Mayor.
And Patrick coming on as the first West African to be on our force is very gratifying. The West African community has been very good to me, and I'm glad that they're being We had a financial oversight meeting where we discussed another partnership with the school board, using our art funds for a program they want to do. We had some questions, so we're going to hold off for now as we get the questions answered, and hopefully start that program a little bit delayed. And you've been close to that, if you want to add what it is, welcome to do that, or we can wait until we get it done.
We can wait till we get it done.
Okay. And we discussed salaries for our judicial team, which we, rest of the council will hear about when we get to the budget. And Deputy Mayor chimed in, but Mr. Vasanella said it correctly, call, call, call. I call them probably once a week, because there's a part of a log on a street, which they don't take care of, they send it to Public Works, or maybe they go and look at it and put a cone in front of it or something. But call, that is what they are there for. And if it's not, if it turns out to be not important, that's what the dispatchers have been trained to do, is figure out what's important and what isn't. They're very good at it, so you're not bothering them. Please call, because there's, I've done a ride-along, I've done seven ride-alongs. You're covering one little area at a time, driving around, you're fishing. It'd be great if somebody out there was telling you, here's where the fish are. Please let them know to help you. That's all I have, Mr.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just give the telephone number one more time, I don't think people know that that is a very, if it's non-emergency, the number that you should call is 732-873-2300. So please save that on your phone. Just remember, 732-873-2300. And of course, it's Emergency 911 is the best number to call.
Correct.
Thank you.
And your manager.
So good analogy, Mr. Mayor. Just like, you know, fishing, I like the analogy, very good one. So, and I'm going to, I'll be the broken record on this, because anyone who happens to watch this, all of you will go through this, some people will watch this on TV, on recording. Countless, countless, countless major cases throughout Franklin Township, Somerset County, New Jersey, this country, the world, have been broken by somebody who saw something and told the Police Department what they saw. When you talk about how crimes are often solved, it is like fishing in an ocean, but if you can, if you can make it a much smaller ocean, smaller, 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 and you get that tip from somebody who says, you know, I saw this car, or I saw this person who looked like this, and you let the Police Department know that information, you might not know why your information is helpful, but it's case after case after case, when I was a detective, got solved by someone saying, you know, we just saw this car parked in, you know, down the street from our house, and we don't recognize it. And it was that call that broke 55 residential burglaries in the Levitt Development. I mean, I'm not making that up, that's a case that I handled. And so that's what you need to do. So broken records sometime is necessary. The only other thing I have to report, Mr. Mayor, on upcoming events, is on Friday, February 2nd, right here in this room, there will be a blood drive. Also happens that while February is also Black History Month, it is also Blood Donor Month, I guess, National Blood, it's National Blood Donor Month, exactly what it is, according to my website here. And on Friday, February 2nd, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, we ask people to come here and donate blood. The area is always in need of blood, this is the New York Blood Center. On our website, you can make an appointment to donate your blood, or you can come here without an appointment, and they will still take your blood. Just like, you can still go to that meeting, even though you don't RSVP, you can give blood with an RSVP or not. So we ask people to give the gift of blood. And I think that kind of wraps it all up for tonight for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Since Mr. Wright isn't here, I'll be the one to take two bites of the apple. I forgot to mention, on Valentine's Day, I will marry all comers. As many as the people come to get married, and they have to come up beforehand to get license, et cetera, I will marry many. This will be a celebration of weddings, hopefully we'll get many people married.
Do they need to RSVP?
They have to pre-register.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
No, I don't, thank you.
How about you, Township Attorney? Why do we pay you?
To listen and witness.
Okay, very good. Council discussion items, we have none, but we have minutes to approve. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for approval. Council Work Session Regular Meeting, November 13th, November 28th, and December 12th, 2023. Executive session.
No, I didn't do the.
Didn't do the executive session. They're presented for approval. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Then seconded, any discussion, any corrections? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
I wasn't here, so I won't pass.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Move the warrants in the amount of $15,992,681.05, January 23rd, 2024, presented to the Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion?
I move that the warrants is where it be paid.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, discussion, anyone like to pull an item, question an item? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
There are no ordinances for second reading, but we have some ordinances for first reading. First reading is when we announce to the world we're considering an ordinance. Second reading is when we actually vote on it, and the public has an opportunity to speak at the second reading. For our first reading's ordinance, 4425-24, An Ordinance Amending the Municipal Code of the Township of Franklin County, Somerset State of New Jersey, more particularly Code Chapter 384, Water, more particularly Section 384-19, Curved Connection Capital Fees, Foregoing Ordinances, presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, publication in accordance with law, and public hearing, and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council, to be held on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, 7:00 PM, in the Council Chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? We do this every year. We have to, by law, to set the connection fees to the water system. Someone who wants to? Any other discussion?
Clerk. Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Ordinance number 4426-24, An Ordinance Amending the Code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 226, Vehicles and Traffic, Providing a New Section 226-35, Road Closures Except for Emergency Vehicles, Providing Foreclosure of a Portion of Brookline Avenue to All Traffic Except Emergency Vehicles. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with law and public hearing, and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council, to be held on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, in Council Chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The very end of Brookline has a Sewerage Authority pump station. Sometimes people in the area are parking their commercial vehicles there overnight, and it's blocking them from getting into the station, so they're going to close that portion of the road and put up a chain so that they can get there. That station has some propensity to flood, is that right?
No, there's no propensity to flood.
I thought, I thought the Director said something about that you often have to go to that station. Okay.
No, the pump, the pump station is one that's maintained daily by the Sewerage Authority. So they have to be able to get in and out of the pump station, and when it's blocked by vehicles, not always necessarily commercial, but any vehicles, it's a dead end. So people park at the dead end, and they block in the pump station, and the Sewerage Authority has the, doesn't, to get in, to go do their daily maintenance. And we want the pump station to be daily maintained, because when that pump station doesn't work, it's not a good thing.
Okay, any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
The next item is ordinance 4427-24, An Ordinance Accepting a Conservation Easement from Royal Somerset Inc. to the Township of Franklin for property known as Block 502.01, Lot 47.02, also known as 315 Davidson Avenue. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law and public hearing, and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council, to be held on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, in the Council Chambers. Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, any discussion? Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
The next two ordinances are both about property that's been spoken about earlier in East Millstone that we are buying, because it's government, we have to do it twice to get one thing done. Ordinance number 4428-24, Ordinance to Acquire by Purchase or Condemnation Certain Lands Within the Township of Franklin County of Somerset State of New Jersey pursuant to NJSA 4812-13A, Property Known as East Millstone Methodist Church. 4812-13A, Property Known as East Millstone Methodist Church, also known as Block 73.01, Lot 4.01, and commonly known as 4 Elm Street, East Millstone, New Jersey. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for Adoption on First Reading, Posting and Publication in accordance with law and public hearing, and Final Adoption at a Meeting of the Township Council, to be held on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Council Chambers. Can I do the two of them together?
No.
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 Now you really earned your money.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We've discussed this throughout this meeting. It does say condemnation, which is eminent domain, that is not being used in this case, it's just the terms of art that we have to use here. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Ordinance number 4429-24, A Capital Ordnance Providing for the Acquisition of the Property Known as East Millstone Methodist Church, also known as Block 73.01, Lot 4.01, and commonly known as 4 Elm Street, East Millstone, New Jersey, in and by the Township of Franklin and the County of Somerset State of New Jersey, appropriating $261,500 there for, there from the Open Space Trust Fund of the Township of Franklin to pay for the cost thereof. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for Adoption on First Reading, Posting and Publication in accordance with law and public hearing, and Final Adoption at a Meeting of the Township Council, to be held on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Council Chambers. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I just want to mention one thing with this. Township manager, Von Lacher, I believe it would have been four houses that would have been able to probably legally be constructed on this parcel, if.
It could have been more than that. It depends on the grading, but overall, I'm looking at the property right now, it's to what, 2.272, city R10, so that's 10,000 square feet. Each acre is 40,000 square feet, so that's 80,000 square feet plus some. You got to build a road, there is some grade down toward the closer, so, I mean, I'm going to say a minimum of four, maybe more.
Maybe more, just so folks have an idea. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yep.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Thank you. Consent Agenda, the items A through N, as listed in the Consent Agenda portion of the meeting, are presented to Township Council for Adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Then seconded. Any discussion, anyone like to pull an item, discuss an item?
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
We are on to all business, boards, committees, commissions, vacancies. Does anyone have a nomination?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Who?
We have, on the Human Relations Commission, or as I mentioned, we have two openings, and I am happy to let you know that we have Dr. Kamla Sharma, who has expressed interest and filled out the Citizens Interest Form, which everybody got a copy of it. So I would like to request approval of his nomination to become a member of the CHRC.
Okay, any other nominations? So I have a nomination for Tanya Burtson, Cultural Arts. There's two openings, there, I guess I could nominate her for the one expiring on 2026. Yours was for Human Relations, they're identical, so you don't have to specify. Any other nominations? Can do this by acclamation. All in favor of these nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, congratulations, Ms. Sharma and Ms. Burtson. So we have a resolution 2405, sorry, 2453, Authorized Executive Session for Contract Negotiation, AFSCME 2426, Senior Managers from 2021 through 25 to the Township Council for Consideration. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
That was a motion in the second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella?
Yes.
So unlike, it's typical that we go in there and then we just come out and adjourn, there is an action, we will.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we are back in public session. So Resolution 24-054, I present the Resolution 24-054, Authorized Execution of AFSCME 2426, Senior Manager Contract, January 1st, 2021, to December 31st, 2025, to the Township Council for Their Consideration. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
That concludes our business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Then seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned, be well, Franklin.